A 20-megawatt solar electric generation facility in Ludlow and Cavendish, Vermont. My name is Margaret Cheney. I'm a member of the Public Service Board. And with me tonight is member Sarah Hoffman. Chairman Jim Bolts was not able to be here tonight because he's out of state. We also have other members of the Public Service Board staff here. We have Andrea McHugh, Monica Stillman, and Lars Bang Jensen. And we also have a member of the Department of Public Service, Sheila Grace. And there are members of the developers organization. We're not going to be having a presentation by the developer tonight, but if you would mind, not mind standing up and showing yourselves as perhaps after the hearing, taking the questions they could ask you. So, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide an opportunity to hear comments from the public regarding the petition filed by Coolidge Solar. The comments made at this hearing will become part of the public record in this docket. In addition to providing comments at tonight's public hearing, you may send the board an email with your thoughts or a letter on the proposed project. There is a handout available at the end of the table. Provides more information about this hearing and the other ways you can provide input to the board in this case, including email and mailing addresses for submitting written comments. It also has the format of this hearing and the purpose. Just so that in case you don't have one of these, our email address is psb.clerk@vermont.gov. Tonight's hearing will be transcribed by a court reporter. And this transcript, along with all other comments received by the board, become part of the case's public file so that board members, staff, and participants in the case can consider the comments. And although public comments do not become part of the formal evidence in this case, they can be especially helpful in raising new issues or perspectives that the board should consider. So, we do look forward to hearing your comments. Again, not only here in person, but by email or letter if you prefer. The transcript itself will be available on the board's website. In addition to meeting with the petitioner after this public part, of course, the department will also be available as well. So, we will now open the floor for public comment. If you wish to speak, please, we have some names on the sign-up sheet. We'll start with those, but if you don't have your name on here and would like to speak, there's another piece of paper at the end of the table, so please feel free and come up and join in. When it is your turn, please state and spell your name clearly for the benefit of the court reporter. So, we'll start with Carl Snyder.
All right. As far as speaking here this evening, I don't know what to speak about because we haven't heard any presentation. We don't have much information on what's going on, what's about to happen. The town manager at the select board meeting had some information there, which, maps and so forth, that didn't print out to where they were eligible where you could see what was going on. So, not knowing exactly what you're up to, it's hard to speak. I will speak generally in terms of the solar and its effects Cavendish. Very small part of it will be in Cavendish. And hopefully, the feeder lines will be underground, buried, is what I think I determined from the maps. In that case, that would comply with the town plan for buried utilities. So, really, there's nothing in the town of Cavendish that's going to affect. However, I am concerned about the long-term effect of adding stuff to the Coolidge Station. The Lake Champlain feeder is going to come in there, and you've approved that, I presume? And this other solar will be added in there. So, that may necessitate the increasing capacity of putting more lines across Cavendish in the east-west direction to handle this additional loads. I'd be quite concerned if the east-west line here that Velco has right now was widened to include parallel installation in the future. I've seen this out and down country. I've seen up to maybe four or five transmission lines in parallel. Because it doesn't seem that they build them larger, they just build more of them. Take up a lot of territory. So, that's one of my concerns. Another concern I would have is radio frequency interference generated by any kind of converter stations. Certainly don't need that. So, other than that, until I really hear a presentation or see a presentation, probably could not comment further on it.
Danny Moore.
I'm Danny Moore, D-A-N-N-E-M-O-O-R-E. I'm the landowner where this solar project is going. And I just wanted to give you a little overview. I've owned the farm for 21 years, kept the land clear, and the buildings maintained as best I could. The expense of doing this is getting beyond my ability. So, I connected with Ranger Solar, discussed options for the property. I've also talked with engineers about subdividing, subdividing the property in the building lots. And if I were to do this subdivision, I would like to create small lots that were affordable to native Vermonters. So, I ended up choosing, at this point, the solar route because it has no impact on the town infrastructure, unlike building lots. This project is back in the woods far enough off the beaten path, so it's not visible by very, very, very few homes. And it's not on the main roads, visible by tourists and commuters. The landscape in the neighborhood is already scarred by gigantic substation and huge transmission lines. The substation is undergoing another expansion in the near future for this new DC line. I've also heard comments about property values going down in the neighborhood. One of the premier neighborhoods in Ludlow is Self Hill, which overlooks one of the biggest eyesores in the landscape, which is the Telp Mine. I also feel that this, as far as I've heard comments about large-scale solar, people against large-scale solar, this project is much less offensive than having 40 smaller solar projects that are not properly constructed with screening and maintained, such as the one in North Springfield and Clarendon, which are huge eyesore. This project will be maintained and mowed and kept looking nice. And this last thing is my own feeling also. Many of the people that are not in support of this project are not affected by it, and their time could be much better spent by doing something constructive and minding their own business.
Thank you. The next person is Will Van, I'm sorry, I can't read your list.
Thank you. Just a few comments. I've lived in Cavendish since 1953 with some interruptions for military service abroad, some other jobs that have taken me away from here, but ultimately, I decided to return to the place I call home and that I love. I think it's important to kind of look at the big picture. If I understand it correctly, Vermont's goal is to be 90% reliant on renewable energy sources by the year 2050. I believe if we're going to achieve that goal, or if we stand any hope of doing that, we need to consider larger projects. The rooftop approach sounds wonderful, but it's reminiscent to me of Mao Zedong's great leap forward in China a number of years ago. You know, when he had people build little metal smelters in their backyards and what have you. And those of you who are old enough to remember that will realize that was an economic disaster. So, the small scale here will probably do somewhat better, but it involves an awful lot of additional expense by scattering the generation of that power. Another important issue in the quest for alternate energy sources is the aesthetic impact. I was at the site visit this afternoon and came away very impressed with the efforts the developers have made to mitigate the impact insofar that is possible. The project is located on a very lightly-traveled road. There is no denying that particularly the south-side meadow is highly visible. But again, I stress, insofar that is possible, I think a real effort is being made to screen the impact to the extent that it is not shocking, as is the case with some of the facilities that Danny cited earlier. The other great advantage is the low density of housing development there, so that few, if any, homeowners are directly affected by the change in appearance. I would also say, in terms of aesthetics, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And so, what we're essentially talking about is changing the overall impression from green to blue. You know, if you think about it. The benefits, I think, are obvious. It's an ideal location adjacent to an existing substation. People have pointed out that's the focus of further very significant energy development in Vermont, and I think rightly so. It's a place that was selected for a number of very good reasons years ago by Velco. I think it has worked well. I know of no negative impacts on the community, certainly in the case of the town of Cavendish. The tax revenue benefit alone was enormous. Unfortunately, some of that was eradicated by Acts 60 and 69, but that's not the fault of the electric developers. I think another enormous benefit that people must consider to, in the future, is that there is no fuel cost with this system of electric generation. And by all accounts and all appearances, the trend in the cost of this is descending. And I think that's important for our future, for our economic future. Another consideration and other concern is that of prime agricultural land. My family came here in 1953 with the intent of running a small dairy farm. My father was 54-years-old when he started that. We milked about 30 cows. And at the end of 10 years of incessant labor and agony and what have you, and all manner of attempts to practice the most modern practices in dairy agriculture, the best year we ever had, we netted $27 out of the operation. So, I think thus by virtue of the fact that emotionally, it feels good to talk about prime agriculture protection, we need to keep in mind what the economic reality is of agriculture on small tracks and on the hillsides. It's not a whole lot of fun when all is said and done. I personally have continued farming the place in terms of growing hay and harvesting it and trying to sell it. Unfortunately, I had a lousy crop this past year. When the market finally, as a result of everybody else having a lousy crop, came to some semblance of reality in terms of the price, but that'll change as the weather does and the seasons Among the other concerns, Carl here indicated the benefit of the underground connector. I have a concern about that insofar as that it goes underneath the town road. And this is a concern that is far more widespread with me than just this particular case. The cost of doing any maintenance on these public facilities that have underground utilities buried in them increases exponentially. And I hope that a provision is made that any additional cost to the municipality or governmental entity that is incurred as a result of having underground utilities in their right-of-way is compensated for by the developer. I think that's very, particularly with that big DC line coming through, which, after crosses Lake Champlain, or goes under Lake Champlain, I think is intended to go along our public highway system. I have some considerable experience with underground utilities. I was director of construction and development at Bromley Ski Resort for 26 years. Bromley Mountain Ski Resorts, Bromley Village, was the first completely underground utility development in Vermont that was started in 1968. So, I lived with the pros and cons of underground utilities. And believe me, DigSafe is a wonderful thing, but all of the burden is on the guys who have to do the work there and not on the utilities that benefit from having that underground I think the economic benefits are enormous, the taxes, the payments to the property owner, and in the long term, a reasonably priced and a stable-priced source of electric power. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person is Richard, I'm sorry.
Benny.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm Richard Speck. I'm the town manager in Cavendish. And the project, although it's fairly large scale in terms of solar installations in Vermont, in fact, it'll be the largest one, has little in the way of direct impact on the town of Cavendish because the majority of the project, of course, is located in the adjacent town of Ludlow. But one of the things that I have an interest in knowing more about and haven't had any information from anyone to date are the ramifications of the connections of this project to the Coolidge Substation and what changes it would incur there. And I don't know if the certificate of public good that you would issue for this project has any implications for work at the Coolidge Substation. I would ask the board that question, just as a procedural question.
I think as a procedural matter, we do look at connections and interconnection because the system's stability and reliability is of high priority to the board and under the statute.
Okay. So, that being said, it's not that the town of Cavendish is contrary to the concept of solar power. We have our own solar, although it's in a place that's pretty inconspicuous. The only aesthetic complaints we had from a few people were, okay, we bonded for this. Where is it? Because it's in a place that doesn't affect anyone directly. So, but at any rate, the town, just like to go on record, is having concerns about the ramifications at the Coolidge Substation and getting more information about it, unless you just haven't heard anything. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Howard Barton Jr., Ludlow Select Board.
Yes, I'm Howard Barton Jr., Ludlow Select Board Chairman. And Ranger Solar came to Ludlow on three different occasions and spoke to the select board about their project. And after we listened to the presentations, we had a public hearing for the Ludlow residents. And then Ranger also did an informational meeting themselves. And they went a very in-depth review of the whole process and what the whole project was going to consist of. And Ludlow Select Board unanimously supported this project. And one of the reasons we liked it is it's one area that the whole project consists of, instead of having the, like, the net metering ones spread out throughout your town. And that was a big part for us. And also, it's a little more economical for your ratepayers for a project like this than net metering, which costs ratepayers lots of extra money. And economic improvements for Ludlow, money, tax dollars, and so that offset everything else for us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Clifford Hughes.
Yes. My name's Clifford Hughes, C-L-I-F-F-O-R-D, H-E-W-E-S. I have a lot of concerns on this project. I understand Dan needs the money to keep his farm going or whatever, but one of my major concerns is setbacks, wetlands, streams that go through on my property and my boundary lines. I'm an adjoining property owner on two boundary lines. And we were supposed to walk those lines, I guess we never have because I haven't heard This is literally in my backyard, off of my deck, and I'm concerned about living there, enjoying a place that my wife and I worked so hard to build. I don't know why I should be penalized for somebody else's monetary gain. This is certainly going to take away from the value of our property. I am one of those people that this does affect. I don't care what they say. I'm not going to mind my own business. The farm you're talking about is a big part of Ludlow history. I understand that the town select board made a deal with the solar people, monetary After this, I understand the governor's not in favor of this. Green Mountain Power isn't in favor of it. I don't know if we have any representatives from the state or Green Mountain Power here tonight.
There are no representatives of Green Mountain Power. There is a representative from the Department of Public Service.
And I have a big concern of noise pollution during the construction of this. It's in my backyard. I visited the solar project that's under construction, that's almost done in Lundery, and that was a lot of noise. Talked to the people there, said they were working seven days a week from daylight to dark. They get that project. That's not very peaceful for the people that live there. There should be a limitation on hours during the day that they can work, number of days they can work, and they can't work holidays. Other than that, you don't understand how I feel about it, I guess. I was talking with the boys from Solar Ranger, or Ranger Solar, but I haven't seen them for a while. We're trying to get some of these things straightened out on setbacks and stuff. I'm very concerned about that.
I don't know if you were here when I asked the representatives of the developer, Ranger Solar, to stand up, but there are a number of them.
They are here. I know.
So, afterward, after the public hearing, perhaps you could be seen.
I met them, yes. I don't know how far along you are on making your decision. If you could tell us that or...
Well, one of the things is there is a handout that shows the schedule to date. This is only the beginning of the, this is only a partial schedule, but you will see, I'm not pulling up the very same thing.
It's on the back.
But that's all that's been said at this point in time. We're really at the beginning of reviewing this project.
Now, I received something today in the mail that if we want to be put on the, I can't think now, but the status, so we can, we'll hold up the meetings and follow up on what, how things are going. We can do that?
Yes, that's entirely possible. You can get on something called the Interested Persons List.
Yeah.
That means you get notice of major things going on. There's also other levels, and this other handout that they have up here will talk about if you wanted to be an intervenor, to be a party.
Right.
This, this kind of tells you the kind of different levels of involvement you can have and what your obligations and benefits would be to each, each different piece.
Now, are we just wasting our time voicing our opinion to the public and the residents of the town of Ludlow?
No, we do hold these public hearings for a reason, and as I said, they don't become part of the formal evidence in the case, but they are important to our consideration of the project.
But we had a public hearing in Ludlow.
No.
And after the meeting, the Ranger Solar and the select board got together and they made a deal.
And that's obviously...
And the majority of the people that were at that meeting were against this project. And that's the way they should have voted.
That's a different process than ours. We're the Public Service Board, and we're looking at this from a statewide level, but we're also here to hear...
You're looking at it for the public good of the people, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
So, what you're talking about is a process that was done in Ludlow with the select board, and we can't really advise you on that one way or another.
What about the power from this project?
Well, we can't give, we are not in the position to give a presentation because we are not developing the project. As I said, after the public hearing, perhaps you could learn more from the developers. We're here to listen to public comments.
To listen to people like me?
Right. Just to listen to, and the court reporter is transcribing every...
But it apparently doesn't do any good for you to talk here because you're, it doesn't make any impact on what you're doing.
No, no, this public hearing does make a difference on what we're doing. That's, that's why we actually come out to the towns and hear what people have to say about a project in their neighborhood. So, what you tell us, it may not be part of the evidentiary record, which would mean you would be in a court with cross-examination, but it does affect our thinking.
So, do you have any more to tell us?
No, not if we're going to have some more meetings and stuff. I...
Well, we, the board was only here tonight. There will be further process along the way in Mount Heli, but this is the chance for the public to weigh in if they're not parties to the case, and that is formal parties.
And that's, what I'm saying then is the governor has stated that he's not for the project. Green Mountain Power or Velco, Green Mountain Power doesn't need the power, doesn't want it, and they're not for the project. And I think they've stated that to the Public Service Board, haven't they?
Well, we're just at the beginning of the process. Later, there'll be, there'll be evidentiary hearings, also called technical hearings. You'll hear it called that. And different players will become parties. They'll actually make a motion to intervene at that. And so, for instance, Velco's already made a motion to intervene. It hasn't been ruled on yet, but Velco has made a motion to intervene.
Now, you're answering my question.
And some of, well, I'm sorry, we don't talk much, but we do come so we can hear what you have to say. To your specific question, so different parties will intervene in the case or make attempts to intervene, and there is a legal standard we use to decide who can intervene. That is in your citizen's guide. But Velco, for instance, just as an example, they've already moved to intervene in the case. And there, some of the other parties you named, like Green Mountain Power, they may too. I wouldn't be surprised to see that. The Department of Public Service, who represents the people and the state, they've already become a party because they're a statutory party. But there'll be a lot of different parties in this, all with maybe very different, different opinions, but people will put out evidence, and there will be cross-examination of witnesses and things. It's then up to us as the Public Service Board to make the final determination.
You made a final decision. I'm the one, Benny.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Well, go ahead and sign up.
Oh, I didn't know. Danny told me the meeting was going to be at 7:30.
And let me just remind everyone at this point that to please sign the sheet so the court reporter will have your name.
I live in Springfield.
And if you're finished, then we'll turn to the next. Are you finished with your comment?
Could I?
Could you state your name?
Thomas Robinson from Springfield, Vermont. I've known Dan a long time. But what, I've been around Vermont, born and brought up here for almost 80 years. And after World War II, there was 10,000 dairy farms in the state of Vermont, and the Barker Farm was one of them. And not, I don't think you're, were you one of the farm?
I worked on a farm.
How many acres you got?
I said I worked on a farm.
No, but how many acres you live on next to Danny?
Oh, I have 25.
25. He's got about 200 and some?
I'm not disputing that.
Nobody's helping Danny with his taxes.
I'm not going to argue with you, and I'm not disputing that.
But the point I'm going to make is there's less than 1,000 farms left in Vermont.
Mr. Robinson.
And you've got to raise something on the farm. Christmas trees, goats, chickens?
We'd love it if you would address your comments to us. And if one person could speak at a time, the court reporter needs to write down everything you're saying. The court reporter needs to be able to write down what you're saying.
Okay. Are you with me, honey?
I am. Can you speak slowly? One at a time.
If you could back up a little, too, it helps if she can...
Well, I'm trying to address you, not undress you.
If she can see your face, it's easier for her to transcribe.
Oh, okay, you want me to face you? I'm deaf, too, honey. But my point I'm making, today, there's less than 1,000 dairy farms left in Vermont. Not just the little five guys of 10 horses and two chickens, or the 400 and 500 cow farms are gone. You can't make any money on a dairy farm. So, what are you going to do? Plant Christmas trees? Oats? I don't know. Goats? Goats? Danny's going to have some sheep up there, I think, to clean up in between the sun. And everybody in this country, they're against nuclear, they're against wind, they're against hydro, biomass, but now you know, they just shut down a multi-million dollar plant in southern Vermont, which is nothing wrong with it, but some politics shut it down. All we're buying power now from Canada. That's why they put in the double transmission line down through to the substation, up on the hill, spent probably ten million dollars. And central Vermont sold out to Green Mountain Power, and they didn't pay us a dime on the five million they owe us.
Exactly.
And another thing I'll tell you...
You're beating your head against the wall, huh?
I... No, no, no. I'm trying to make a point to the... This board and this lady right here, the nuclear power plant that they've shut down, now they're talking about bringing in a pipeline from Pennsylvania and turning it into a steam-powered generating plant, same stuff. But we let three, four hundred good jobs fly out the window because somebody's against nuclear. They're against wind, hydro, nuclear, biomass, coal, and I'll tell you what, if they cut the umbilical cord off your house, you'd cry like a wounded owl hung in a well.
I've got my own generator, so I don't care.
Yeah, you go out, a lot of people, when they lose their power, they go out and buy a generator, and half of them put it in the cellar, and some of them die of carbon monoxide because they're so stupid, they don't know enough to come in all the rain.
Well, let me tell you, Dan Moore's financial problems has nothing to do with me.
Oh.
You understand that?
You're going to help him pay his taxes?
I can't make reference.
You should have thought of that before you cut the farm.
Sir, this is not a hearing for discussion back and forth. It's a hearing for us to hear what you have to say.
I look at it like this, the man that has the farm should be able to raise pigs, chickens, goats, I don't care. That's the point I'm trying to make, not the neighbor telling them what he's got to raise, because it's going to impact your land for how long? Maybe six months at the longest?
Mr. Robinson, can you please direct your comments to us? You're not here to have a debate with your neighbors.
Are you getting my point?
We're getting your point, but we're not here to have you have a debate. You're supposed to be telling us your thoughts, you've been doing here.
Well, I know, that's my thoughts, and that's... But that's the mentality of a lot of outsiders that have come in here and bought these little side hill farms for peanuts. And they don't care if they raise anything or not, they let the barns fall down, spend a million dollars on the house, but anybody in the country, in the state, if you cut that umbilical cord off their house, they'll be going, oh, and I hate power lines, I don't even like the looks of them, but we've got to have them. There's no other alternative. And I lived when there was no electricity. And the Barker Farm started, then there was no electricity. And we didn't get electricity till rural came through, you know, after World War II. And I've about said all I want to say. I don't know if I've helped anybody or hurt anybody. And I really don't care.
Thank you. The next name is Ellis Nelson.
Sit over here next to you, honey.
I went to the site meeting today and went over all the aspects, for the most part, of the project. I live about a mile from the project, and I'm not that fond of the idea of moving into my neighborhood. Some people call me a nimby, but I look at it as if this large of a project goes in up on North Hill, then it opens up the way for more of these to happen in Vermont. And I'm not only just speaking for myself, but I'm just thinking that the other people in the future that are going to have to deal with such big projects going in next door to their houses. The other concern that I have is the RECs, if they were going to be selling them on this project or not, I haven't gotten an answer to that. That is my concern, if they're going to be selling them out of state or if they're going to be keeping them in state. If it's not the solar power that we've been generating, from what I've understood, the RECs have been sold out of state and it hasn't benefited Vermont as a whole with all the... We get the glass and somebody else gets the benefit, and I'm not a big fan of that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I do not have another name on the list. Would anyone else like to speak? Could you just state your name and spell it for the record, please, for the court...
George Timko, T-I-M-K-O. I'm selecting a town, but I'm not talking for the town. But I was really curious about whether, one, that this would add any more hum to that to the Coolig Substation, because that hum is... I mean, I live miles away, and if the wind's right, I can hear it on some nights. And it's... I can hear the snow guns on some nights too, but they're seasonal, but this is... That's a constant thing. And I know some people live around there, they feel it's gotten louder, I don't know, because they have added more new transformers and stuff, so that was one of the concerns is whether not only this project, but then there's that cable project too, whether that would increase that noise, which is constant. And the only other comment is I have loved that place for the... It holds a unique aesthetic. If you were at a site visit, I understand there was one today, I suppose you could see that, and I understand that, you know, people own the property, want to make some bucks and stuff, but so many of us who live here appreciate that aesthetic, and it's certainly going to be compromised with this project, so that's my concerns.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and we do appreciate your comments and concerns. I encourage you to add any other thoughts, either by email to the address that is on the piece of paper, or write us the old-fashioned way. And this is just the beginning of the process, but there will be filings on the board's website as well.
The website is listed on this sheet.
And again, I encourage anyone with questions for the developers to talk with them after the meeting. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you.